Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 4th, 2022 Tinsborough School Committee Meeting. Please be reminded that these meetings are audio and video recorded. My name is Becky Stanton and I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions with Nate.
Hi, Nate Marino, Student Representative.
Michael Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Tenerell.
Ryan McMahon.
Rob Mullen.
Danielle Athanas.
Good evening, Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
We'll rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll seek a motion to approve the September 20th, 2022 School Committee Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye abstain. Is there anybody opposed? That carries 301. Citizen time. Are there any citizens here to speak? All right. Correspondence, Dr. Flanagan?
None at this time, ma'am chef.
Great. Moving on to personnel. Notifications of new hires. We have Lynn Carriganis, a TES paraprofessional. Wendy Johnson, TES Administrative Assistant. We have notifications of paternity leave for Dan Castagno, a THS teacher, and notifications of resignation for Elizabeth Hardigan, THS Student Services Administrative Assistant, with over 10 years of service in the district. So, thank you, Ms. Hardigan. Moving on to share the success. Nate?
Yep. So, some great students from TES will be presenting later tonight, I'm sure, as you saw. So, nothing from me on that. The middle school this week, it's Spirit Week there at TMS with competition each day. Yesterday was comfy day, today was jersey day, tomorrow's pink out for breast cancer awareness. Thursday's going to be Tiger Pride Day and Friday will be blackout. TMS finished their fundraiser on Friday with student profits going towards their trip to Washington DC in 8th grade. Students will have another chance to help pay for their trip through a cookie dough fundraiser in late October. Club started up last week with the beginning of late bus service. The Student Council held its first big informational meeting about all they're doing this year and they also brainstormed some new ideas. And you can look for the club's blanket making initiative, which will be coming up soon. At THS Homecoming Week is underway. They're excited to promote and celebrate school spirit with competitions and activities throughout the week. Sports teams will be in action on Saturday, so come out and support the Tigers. You can also check THS and TPS social media to follow the excitement of the week. Congratulations to Joe Rodwell on receiving the letter of commendation from the National Merit Scholarship Program. Commended students placed among the top 50,000 scores of more than 1.5 million students that participated in the PSAT exam. So, congratulations to him. The Adulting 101 Club had its first meeting of the year last week as they learned how to jumpstart a car and change attire. Each meeting, students discuss and engage in various activities that do not take place in the typical classroom, but are skills that help prepare for life after high school. Many service learning projects are underway, supporting causes and organizations such as breast cancer awareness, the Jack Trotia Foundation, the Merrimack Valley Food Bank, and the National Cancer Research Center. And lastly, congratulations to October Students of the Month, Alexa Nogler, Delaney Salerno, Jimmy O'Keefe, and Mohamed Delamy. And just a reminder to everyone that the first round of progress reports are going to be sent out this Friday. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thanks Nate. I'll seek a motion to take 9A and 9C out of order.
So moved.
Second?
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 400. So, we have our TES students here tonight. Thank you for joining us. This is the best part of the year is when we have the students come in to present to us. So, we'll hand it over to you and why don't you share your presentation?
Good evening. We are excited to be here tonight to share what is happening at TES. We will start by introducing ourselves. My name is Joseph Ford and I'm in Mr. Stanley's class.
My name is Ben McGovern and I'm in Mr. Stewart's class.
My name is Joseph Courtney De Morales and I am a student in Mr. Lewis's class.
My name is Aiden Maude and I'm in Ms. Vera's class.
My name is Kelly Ammaron and I'm in Mr. Stewart's class.
My name is Ariana Wudette and I'm in Ms. Russell's class.
TES opened this year with 774 students. 113 students are brand-new to our school. The first day of school was filled with excitement and over 127 staff members greeted us as we entered the building to our classrooms and our classrooms.
If you've walked around TES recently, you might have noticed two areas that have been flattened and smoothed out. These two areas are where our new playgrounds are being built. We are hoping to have them completed by November. We are so excited to play on them.
Another change you will see around TES is our new stripes mascot. Our very talented art teacher, Mrs. Anderson, and her husband designed the new mascot. Last week, we reached our TES community to ask how the school year was going and what they were looking forward to this year, this coming year. Here's what they told us.
Officer Bonzer is currently working with Ms. Makovich on a book of our George, our very own comfort dog. She told us that George was certified in search and rescue recently. His birthday is coming up and he's going to be hosting a comfort dog event with some of his canine friends.
Pre-K says that the start of school has been great so far. Each classroom is having a lot of fun getting to know each other by playing games and singing songs. They are slowly working towards following a routine and understanding the rules of the classroom, which can be different from home.
Kindergarten has been working a lot on following directions, being safe in the classroom, and being a good kind friend to others. We have also been working a lot on expected versus unexpected behaviors in the cafeteria, bathroom, and hallways, so they can learn about each one. We are currently working on new vocabulary words that we learn in the read-alouds we read in class. Students are learning how to write letters, both uppercase and lowercase, and the sounds that go along with each letter they learn. We do a lot of writing practice on whiteboards with pencils and forming letters with Play-Doh as well.
The first graders were very excited to start school. They are full of energy and want to try everything. They love seeing old friends and having making new friends quickly. They have new curriculum in for reading, phonics, and writing, and the students are excited about the books that come with the program. After their practice in sounding out words, the kids who are very beginner readers have discovered they can read the sentences. They have been so incredibly amazed at themselves that they can read something. The first grade teacher we were talking with said, "That's the kind of excitement that gets me excited too."
Second grade has jumped right into their learning. In social studies, they're learning about maps and globes. They skip counting in math and identifying coins by their name and value. They are working on personal narratives in writing and finding the central idea and supporting details of a story in reading. A second grade teacher commented on how excited the students were when learning new things.
Our school counselors enjoyed welcoming their children back into the building and connecting with them. The health office has been busy at TES. They hope everyone has a happy and healthy school year.
Mrs. Laura Shell, our library teacher, has had a wonderful start of this school year. She always starts with expectations for how we treat each other and our materials, so we can all be safe and successful in the library. Each class has discussed how to use a shelf marker when browsing for books and how to choose a just-right book. The fifth graders had a lesson about censorship in honor of National Banned Books Week. She is really looking forward to the Scholastic Book Fair returning to TES the week after Thanksgiving.
Our third grade teachers let us know that they have had a great start to third grade. Both teachers and students commented on how nice starting the school year with no restrictions has been. So far, they have been working on reading lots of books and focusing on their characters. Third graders are writing a personal narrative and learning about the life cycles of plants and animals. They're taking time to refresh their addition and subtraction skills and will move on to telling time in math.
The fourth grade teacher we spoke with said, "The beginning of fourth grade is going so well. I feel like I'm really getting to know my students and build strong relationships with them. I love my class. They have such outgoing personalities. They radiate positivity. They show their stripes daily and encourage one another to be kind. They help build a positive classroom community." In their fourth grade classes, fourth graders have started picking out their just-right books and have dived into new ELD curriculum. Right now, in math, students are working on rounding numbers in various place values. They're rounding numbers in the millions. In social studies, they're learning the basic map skills and have started learning about the five regions of the United States.
Mr. Riley, our physical educations teacher, told us that a highlight of the start of the school year, for him, was seeing all the students and seeing how excited they are to be in his class again. He told us that it makes him feel so good as a teacher when he sees how many kids he has worked with and has had an impact on. Students can look forward to a return of many of their favorite sports and games that they played last year, along with some new games that will be mixed in.
Fifth grade teachers tell us the start of school for fifth grade has been great, and we agree. In math, we apply math norms to solve multiplication problems using various strategies and learning about early European explorers and social studies. Our science problem starts with states of matter. I'm looking forward to making memories with friends this year.
I'm looking forward to the new playgrounds this year.
I'm looking forward to having a good final year at TES this year.
I'm looking forward to the new playground this year.
I'm also looking forward to the new playground this year.
I'm also looking forward to the new playground.
Finally, we are gearing up for our first annual walkathon, which will be held during the day on Friday, October 14th. We are happy to announce that we have passed our halfway point and have raised more than $10,000. TES will be able to celebrate with a pajama day. We are also hoping to have 500 student registrations, so that we can dunk the doctors.
Look at me!
We would like to thank Mrs. Mitchell for her help with this presentation. Dr. Flanagan, Mr. Woodlock, Mr. Messina, Nate Marino, and dedicated school committee members, thank you for showing your stripes and working hard to support our teachers and staff at TES. We appreciate you taking the time to hear from us this evening.
Wow. That was absolutely wonderful. I saw the other presentations from video and I think this was the best one we had. The other presentations were great, but the elementary school always shows up very strong. So, thank you all. You've set a great example for the lower elementary school as fifth graders. I think you're all fifth graders, right? What a great example you've set for the lower elementary school to look up to. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Chair Stanton said at the beginning that these are our favorite nights, when the three schools present in front of us. Everything we do is for you guys. And to see you guys sit here tonight, there's a lot of adults who couldn't do what you kids just did. Be proud of yourselves. Millions of people are at home watching right now.
But you will be able to see this on TV at a later date. But, great job, great performance. Awesome. What are your favorite subjects?
Probably like art and phys ed.
Yeah, I like art and phys ed also.
Yeah, I like phys ed.
I just absolutely love art. I'm always doodling anytime I can.
You love what?
I absolutely love art. I'm just always doodling anytime I can.
I like science.
I really like phys ed and library.
Great.
And we too are looking forward to the playground.
You know, that was my turn. I was going to say, very nice job and yes, our entire board is looking forward to that new playground. In fact, we're coming over to play on it too before you guys stop.
Picture it doesn't happen. Picture it doesn't happen.
I'll take pictures.
So, I have a question for you guys and you don't all have to answer it. If you had any one piece of advice for the kindergartners as fifth graders, what would you tell them?
Like focus during class, because you're really needed.
Yeah, I agree with like, with that, like not talking to your friends, else like you might miss something really important.
I just wanted to say, this is from my experience, before I moved to Tinsborough, I had one of the best teachers, but she was basically like any other teacher. And I just wanted to say, just try to have a good year. That's the best thing you could actually do for yourself.
I agree with Joseph.
I would probably just tell them to pay attention.
Do you guys take your own advice?
Yeah, yes.
I think probably a lot of kindergarten teachers would agree with you.
Well, thank you all for coming and presenting. You did a great job and thank you to the families for supporting your students. It's really important to have them here and hear from the students directly, so we really appreciate your time and efforts. And again, great job, everyone.
Ma'am chef, would it be appropriate to take a one or two-minute recess, so we get a couple pictures here of the students at the table? So, Mr. Piper, we need a motion and we'll go into recess for a minute.
I'll seek a motion.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 500. I will call the meeting back to order from our brief recess. For item 9C, we'll have Mr. Ogden present.
Thank you for having me. Here tonight to request approval for an overnight trip to New York City on December 9th and 10th. This is a trip that Charlie Rares has run for a number of years. It is approximately open to 50 students and the cost this year is $450. The increase from previous years mainly is due to the busing, which was very drastic in the price increase. So, Mr. Rares put a lot of work into it to try to keep it down where he could. So, the trip will include a show. They'll go see Wicked on Friday night and then they'll do some sightseeing on Saturday before returning that evening.
Ma'am Chair, I could just add, this has been a longstanding tradition, this trip, and it's just another sign of us kind of getting back to things we've done and keeping the best of traditions that we had and kind of expanding from there. So, this is something that I think a lot of kids have come back and had a great experience with. And it's an opportunity to get to New York City and go to the World Trade Center and see a show. It's just a really great trip for these kids. They go on a Friday afternoon, they come home Saturday, minimal impact on school, and it's a great opportunity for them. Fully support it.
When was the last time that we were able to do this field trip?
2019, right?
Uh, yes.
December, December 2019.
Yep.
All right. I'm glad to see that we're getting back to it. Does anybody have any questions? All right, so I'll seek a motion to approve the trip as presented.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries 5-0-0.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Ogden.
Thank you.
Good luck with homecoming this week.
We'll go back to item number seven, which is subcommittee updates. At this time, we have nothing for the technology subcommittee. That will be rescheduled to a later date. And are there any updates on the capital asset subcommittee?
We did meet on Wednesday evening, Mr. McMahon, Mr. Messina, and myself. And we started the process. We haven't gotten very far into it other than a reorg and looking at the rating system and how we're going to go forward with that. We will be asking the department heads for any capital assets that they would like to see, but we're meeting again on the 12th and we'll have more at that time.
Great. Unfinished business, 8A.
Thank you, Ma'am Chair. Jump right into our slide deck. And as always, we'll start with our true North statement. We value our people, we value all people in our school community and are committed to continuous growth. What a presentation tonight as we talk about our people. That's what it's all about. What they were able to talk about, they talked about their experiences with their teachers, with their classmates, the positive experience they're having in school. It's great that we never lose sight and we never lose focus of the people we serve. And I think one of the most telling things was, I can't tell you how many hours that Mr. Tennerell, Mr. Mullin, and Mr. Messina put in last year at Capital Assets, Asset to advocate for the need for a playground and to hear the excitement in their voices today. That's why we do it. And that was just awesome to hear. So, it's all about our people. So, we'll go to the first slide. This is going to be modified a little bit, our upcoming meetings. Originally, we had talked about October 18th as a technology presentation, but I think it's important to have that technology subcommittee meet prior to a presentation at the school committee level. So, what we'll try to do is we'll try to flip those meetings. So, I'd actually like to bring student services to our next meeting, October 18th, and move technology out to November 1st. Per request at the last school committee, Mr. Woodlock did reach out to Chief Russell and Deputy Chief Woods, and we will have first responders come to November 15th meeting to do a presentation with the committee and talk about the good work going around emergency planning and whatnot for the district. So, we'll jump into 8A, item 8A, capital projects update. I did have a meeting yesterday with Fontaine Brothers and they did a presentation on the middle school building project. They talked about essentially a four-phase fencing system and site utilization plan as we think about turning Norris Road campus into a construction site. So, it was very involved, very detailed. Couldn't have been more impressed with Fontaine Brothers and the work they put into it. I will be following up with meetings with both Mr. Pollitt and Mr. Ogden so we can understand and really talk about the operation of this campus as it relates to their proposed phasing project. They wanted our initial input. This is a beginning, jumping off point. It's a very collaborative process. And once we operationally agree to what the phasing of the fencing will be, we will, that'll come before the school building committee. But the work has begun to talk about that. There is a plan to get permanent fencing in the ground this November. And then we're talking about jersey barriers that will go up in the winter when site demolition starts of the actual gym and central office area. So, that whole phasing will go. And then, once we go from demolition to construction, the phasing and the fencing changes a little bit and it becomes a little bit more expansive. And they talk about cutting in a road in the summer for construction vehicles. So, let all be presented to the school building committee. Right now, our work is to really understand what the impact will be operationally and adjust accordingly. One thing that I do want to tease out is, I think it's important for the community to understand that effective in November, once that fencing's up, this will become a construction site for the next two and a half years. And our parking is going to be impacted and our travel routes will be impacted minimally. So, I ask that everyone is patient and flexible as we plan accordingly and we get the school that we so deserve next door. So, that's the work going on in terms of our meeting yesterday with the, with Fontaine Brothers. We also met earlier today, we had a meeting with J C J Architecture as well as a security expert, as well as Chief, Deputy Chief Woods and Chief Russell, to talk about the glazing in the school, to talk about where cameras are going to go, to talk about the communication system in the school. So, all of that is in place as well as we, as we going through talking about where we are at Capital Asset Project for TMS. The next update we have in terms of Capital Asset Project is Valley Collaborative Lakeview School, as some people still know in town. As you know, we had a window project going on there. Mr. Messina, you want to give a little brief update on where we are with Valley Collaborative?
Sure. Thank you. So, Mr. Woodlock, Mr. Woodlock's put up a picture of the interior of the Lakeview School. This is the back wing from the front. The contractor did come in over the summer while the Valley Collaborative staff and kids were located over at the middle school temporarily. And basically, did all the prep work on site, but were basically at the mercy of our manufacturer of the windows cowl wall in terms of getting the actual windows delivered. So, what the contractor did in order to make the building habitable for Valley Collaborative is to frame out some windows with plywood and plexiglass to give them a space that they could hold school in. Valley was extremely happy that we did this. The original plan was they were going to relocate while this project was being done, but the fact that they can operate within the school while, while we're waiting for the windows to be delivered, they were very happy with that. And last check, last week, I reached out to Lock and Lock, our contractor, and he is estimating a delivery of the windows the first week in January. So, we are hoping that if that holds, the project will be done by the end of January. The playground, as the most popular subject today, we did reach out to the playground company and they are expecting delivery of the equipment the second week of October, so hopefully next week at some point. They do estimate about a two-week install after that. And pouring the rubber takes about an additional three days. So, I think somebody, one of the kids mentioned November, and with any luck, we'll see that ready in November. Mr. Mullin can take a ride on all the equipment before the kids come through. So, that's our hope in terms of capital right now.
So, those are the capital projects update. Happy to answer any questions anyone has.
So, with respect to the valley windows, are those weatherproof? I can't imagine plexiglass is very energy efficient and with all that framing exposed, are we concerned about leaks, you know, cold weather? Like, is it really a good environment for these kids?
They're, they seem to be pleased with the environment right now. You know, if we need to make an adjustment, we certainly will. You know, I think we're just trying to hold on until January to see, get these other windows in. But I think they, operationally and for routines and systems and protocols, I think it works for them. If, if it doesn't, I'm certainly, Dr. Scott will certainly reach out to me and we can have a conversation about alternatives and come up with. They do have additional space, Valley Collaborative in Billreka. Again, that's going to increase, impact bus routes and things like that, but I think they, their hope is to hang in there while they can.
I actually know if we could maybe add some insulation and other pieces of plywood on the outside or something.
Oh, sure. We'll absolutely work with them, absolutely. Anything we can do to, to make it as comfortable as possible, we certainly will.
Excellent.
It's a great partnership, so we want to keep them happy, absolutely.
Moving on to 8B.
So.
District improvement.
Yes. Ma'am Chair, let Mr. Woodlock talk about our strategy for district improvement, provide an update as to where we are.
Sure. So, again, very much an update. This is something we've been talking about each school committee since I've been here, pretty much. So, just a little reminder of where we've been in August. We did an extensive review of the major initiatives and recommendations. We presented that to you as well. In September, we had all of our building administrators draft and submit key actions to go along with our strategic objectives and our priorities and our district administration. Myself, Mr. Flanagan, Ms. Lewenzic, really poured over these documents for quite a long time because we really feel like we want to make sure we get these right. We don't want, we want them to be a living, breathing document that we're actually going to kind of live with each and every day that's going to mean something to us. So, we've been spending a lot of time with this. So, as part of that process, we then turned the key initiatives back over to the building administrators with some feedback from us, just like you might get in a typical English language arts classroom, something like that. And we had some, some really hearty, rich discussions about what does it look like? What do we want to see when we have a finished product? And some of the key things we talked about was, you know, we have outputs and then we have outcomes. And we really wanted our final expectations in this SDI to be outcomes, like meaningful, what's it going to look like? What's the change we hope to see? Now, we recognize, you know, you set goals for yourself, sometimes you need to make adjustments, sometimes maybe you reach too far, but we want to see like, what will it look like if we are successful? Not just what things can we do that might get us closer to success. Those are our outputs and those are still in there. But we wanted to make sure that our final endpoint on this SDI was not an output, like we're going to have a survey or we're going to create a document. No, what's going to happen once we do that? Those are the outcomes that we wish to see. So, as you get, get a chance to look at the finalized SDI as it sits as of Friday, I think when you look at those strategic initiatives, you'll notice the final column to the right, you're going to see outcomes. And that's what we're looking to do. That's the change we're looking to create, the improvements we're looking to create. I don't want to be too repetitive here, but as, as we create those outputs, what are we going to see? What changes are we going to see? How are we going to get better each and every day and each and every year? So, does anyone have questions on that process?
I like the distinction between outputs and outcomes. I think it's good.
Yeah, I mean, we can measure, yeah, we did this, check the box, but how does it impact kids? How's it make us better at what we do? That's ultimately, that's what we're looking for, that next level. So, it was critical that we had a lot of good dialogue, a lot of good conversation. And I think, you know, we'll be able to assess where we are, both qualitatively and quantitatively, and understand how the SDI will continue to morph and get better each year and become something that is practical and applied into everything we do in the district. So, it was, it was, it was great conversation and I think we're all kind of on the same page about it right now, which is good. We all have a clear understanding, which is great.
I have a question. Are there any specific needs that you have that maybe weren't in our budget or weren't planned in order to execute on the, on the SDI? Or is it too soon to say?
No, it's not too soon to say. I think one of the things that we see is, you know, we deal with, we deal with students. We don't make widgets, right? And it involves, every time a family potentially moves into the district, it involves and impacts how we staff, how we, how we create programming, how we instruct students. So, we're having some, some real conversations now about some of our structures and I anticipate coming back before this committee in the very near future with some, some plans and thoughts as how we can better service our students and, and support our staff, really. So, we are, we are looking at it. It's, it's just an evolution. That's why, you know, it's great to have a document that says you're going to do this and then you put it on a shelf, but that document needs to evolve with you as you deal with the ever-changing population of people in your district. So, so we're having some real conversation right now about some of our structures and we will be coming back to the committee soon.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I think we covered 9A with the TES students, so we can move on to 9B, the custodial maintenance staff.
Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. So, this is not a unique situation within, within various school committees. I think you've read a number of articles about schools that are struggling to find teachers, struggling to find bus drivers. We're fortunate that our teaching ranks are fully staffed, but we still have the challenges of our support, bus drivers, food service workers, paraprofessionals, and certainly maintenance. And Dr. Flanagan and I spoke about the fact that, you know, it'd be a good time to update the committee in terms of where we're at and some of the, some of the ways we're trying to get creative with that. This is a relatively small staff of 22 total, including the facilities director and his assistant. He has 15 custodians and five maintenance staff that work for him. Of those 20 positions that work for Dominic, currently there are four vacancies, as well as four long-term active workers compensation cases. So, essentially, a 20 million, 20-person group is down to 12 workers right now. We've, we've tried to post these positions. We've got a few, a few people that have come in. A couple didn't necessarily work out. We've, we've gone back out posting on Indeed.com. Dominic just had three more interviews on Monday with the hope that he can get maybe two or three of those to come in and work. He's also reached out to Chelmsford, who has a hybrid model of a cleaning service as well as their own staff. And Dominic has begun reaching out to two contractors at this point, who will be looking at some potential hybrid situations where we have some of our workers and some of their workers cleaning the buildings. And if, if we can get some sort of favorable cost quote, then maybe we can start integrating some of those workers along with getting some new staff in. So, there's been a lot of challenges. It's, it's not unique to, to any of the positions, as I mentioned, but just wanted to give the committee an update at this time.
And the crew that we have is doing a great job and they're picking up for each other and they're doing overtime when they can, but the fact of the matter is, we have eight out of 20 positions open at this time, or not working at this time.
Are we not getting applications? Are the people applying not qualified?
I think it's a lack of applications more than anything else. That's why you saw, I think last week you saw on social media, we're trying to go that route. We're trying to attack it differently. We've gone from school spring to Indeed to social media, word of mouth. Dominic's driving to the Home Depot parking lot and looking for, for subcontractors there. It's, it's anything we can do to, to try to get people that are looking for work. It's just a very tough market right now.
So, is it a wage issue?
I don't know that it's a wage issue. What do you, Joe?
I, I, I do not believe it's a wage issue. I think having, having the steps in place allows us to, to sense the market and, you know, offer the salaries accordingly. I think there's an overall sense that people just don't want to work. And, and, you know, Dominic mentioned to me this morning, he's, he's part of a facilitators group on their listserv and he's like, wow, we're not unique. I mean, this is, this, you know, I think Wellesley was one of the bigger, bigger groups and, you know, I doubt very much Wellesley is, you know, price is an option in terms of hiring custodians for Wellesley. I think it's a lack of a labor force.
So, it's just something we wanted to get in front of you right now with, you know, as we approach the budget season and certainly we have negotiations coming up at some point, I believe with Council 93. Just something to consider as we start thinking about how we can appropriately staff the schools to make sure they're clean. Again, our, our crew's doing a great job. We just need more.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Messina, finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Signing of bills, there were 11 bill warrants presented to the committee tonight. I do have them all back signed. In your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. And for signing of payroll, we will do an update at your next meeting. And that's it.
Moving on to school committee discussion. Nate, did you have anything?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Mr. Woodlock?
No, thank you.
Mr. Messina?
I'm all set.
Thank you.
Danielle?
I don't think so.
Rob?
I just want to thank the kids coming in. They did a fantastic job this evening, like we've all said already. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Hartigan for her 10 years within the district. She started off over at the elementary school as a classroom assistant in either kindergarten or first grade. I can't remember which one. Always fantastic with the kids there. And then she has been a guidance secretary here in this building, helping out, helping out the kids with, you know, setting their classes and, and offering her advice. I just want to wish her the very best of luck in, in everything she pursues in the future.
Thanks, Rob. Ryan?
Thank you. The TES are coming out. Another great job by the students, you know. Like you said, every year they seem to steal the show. I don't know how they do it, but they're awesome. I'm happy we're talking about SDIs again, you know, with post-COVID and everything. It's good to be back. Like I said earlier, I really do like that we're focused on outcomes instead of just checking box and being a task manager. You know, what we're really invested in is it effective? Are we wasting our time? Was it really working? And if not, let's adjust. So, I think that's really good and I like that direction. So, thank you.
Tony?
Just thank you to the kids from the elementary school and the staff over there for bringing them. And just a reminder, it's staying darker later and getting darker earlier. And we have kids at school bus stops, so please drive careful. Thank you.
Flanagan?
Yes, just congratulations to Elizabeth Hartigan and thank you for your 10 years of service. I've known Elizabeth both personally and professionally for a long time and just a great person. Wish her all the best. And I would say to all of our high school students, I know that you're excited for homecoming. Please keep yourself in check. It's, it's a fun event and it's, there's some camaraderie, there's some rivalry going on, but keep it in the lines, keep it in the lines. So, that's all we'll say there.
How many of those students do you think are watching this meeting?
None. But Nate's going to report out for me tomorrow.
I'd just like to add that I went to some of the open houses and the schools look great. The teachers and staff are doing a great job starting off the year and so it was really good to be back in the schools. And again, thanks to the TES students for such a great presentation. With that, we do have a need for executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We'll return from executive session only to adjourn the regularly scheduled meeting. This requires a roll call vote. Is there a motion for executive session?
Second?
Danielle?
Aye.
In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. So, that carries 5-0-0 and we are in executive session. Thank you.